Councilmember Machesek.
Here.
Councilmember Nielsen.
Yes.
Councilmember Sowers.
Here.
Great, thank you, Bessie Jo. So today's work session is Agenda Bill 20-242, Streets Capital Improvement Plan and Maintenance Improvement Plan Presentation. So I'm guessing, Annette, that Nathan will be leading us through that, but if you have any introductory remarks you would like to make, we will do that. I'll turn the meeting over to you and Nathan. Thank you.
Okay, thanks so much, Mayor Giles. Good morning, Mayor and Council, Annette Spickard, City Manager. Nathan and I scheduled this conversation with you this morning because we are partway through the implementation of the Streets Local Option Tax ordinance and projects that the voters approved several years ago and thought it'd be a good time to touch base with you on what's been accomplished and what we're looking forward to coming up and answer any questions. And then, within our Transportation Master Plan, each year, we allocate a portion of those dollars for maintenance projects, the smaller projects. And so Nathan wants to talk to you about what's proposed for those projects coming up and talk to you about that as well. So he provided for you a number of documents in your packet, and so I think they're going to walk you through those and take any questions you have. And it's just a time for interaction with you and some feedback on what we're proposing over the next several years with these dollars. With that, I'll turn it over to Nathan.
Okay, thank you, Annette, and good morning, City Council, Nathan Stewart, Public Works Director. As Annette said, this is really an opportunity this morning just to familiarize the council with how the city has been managing the Streets LOT expenses over the past five years, and then also really trying to look forward and how we identify the future projects that are going on and kind of explain too how roads management is dynamic and as things change over time, although we may want to do something, we may have to change that focus because certain roads might deteriorate faster than others. So my first thought was to kind of explain where we're at with the Streets LOT. Revenues have been coming in well over what we had originally planned back in 2015, and that was expected, and that was the hope, because tracking down tax data was really difficult back then. And I'm going to pull onto the screen the original seven-year plan that was proposed as part of that ordinance to kind of give you a sense of where we started. And I'll share my screen here if I can slowly do that without screwing up. I apologize. Last night I had some microphone errors. Hopefully, I fixed that this morning. Mayor Bob, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I had to unmute, but on my screen, you went blank there. Okay, now we've got a spreadsheet. Thanks, Nathan.
Okay, and I'll try to zoom this in just a little bit. This was the original seven-year plan that was put together in the Streets LOT ordinance. And when this table was put together, it was put together looking at a fiscal assumption of how you could actually fund projects in a sustainable manner where you would have enough money to bid out projects. Much has changed since 2015. Most consequentially is the council's decision to implement the Downtown Core project in a specific schedule. So these dates that you see over here, 2016 through 2022, these projects had to get completed in a different order because we simply couldn't fund certain phases of the Downtown Core project. We needed to save money. But I am happy to tell you that what you're going to see in these upcoming tables and maps will show that the work that was proposed between 16 and 22 is programmed to get completed. So every single one of these projects in these plans that I will be showing you this morning will be completed by the end of 2022. They may not have occurred in the specific year that we said they were, but by the end of 2022, we intend to have them all done. Commerce Street has been completed. Park Street from First to Third is almost done. It will be done by the time we go to Thanksgiving. Idaho Street is completed. East Einhard Lane, you will see in upcoming tables, is scheduled for completion in 2022. Second Street from East Lake to Park has been completed, and Lenora Street from Third to First has been completed. So we're getting there, but this is important to note that as far as the voters and how they voted on this ordinance, by the end of 2022, we can show them that we have completed this work. Any questions on this original CIP that was proposed, again, principally for the ordinance, not necessarily based on the practicalities of implementation? Okay, well, we can always go back to that. What I included in your packet, and I think it's important maybe just to stick with the Capital Improvement Plan, is our new table. And let me a second. Move over here. I have it. I'm showing this to you in Excel so that I can zoom in as necessary. This table is in your packet, and it shows an eight-year Transportation Capital Improvement Plan, 21 through 28. And if you...
Nathan?
Yes.
You're still showing the ordinance table.
Oh, interesting.
So you must have just shared the... Instead of your screen, you shared just that item.
How's that look?
Better.
Okay, thanks, Bessie Jo. So this is a table that's in your packet. And I guess first to show the years that we have here, 21 down through 27 and then 28, and you'll see in 27 and 28, we do not have any projects identified. That doesn't mean we don't have work to do. That just means we've somewhat tried to say, hey, let's hold off on designating projects in 2028 because there's so much flux in how these projects get implemented and also the road conditions. There are a couple major factors in how we can implement projects. The first is fiscally, whether we have the money or not. So depending on projects that come before, we may spend more money on certain capital projects, which leaves less money for the future to work on other projects we want to do. Bid pricing that comes in changes. And then probably the largest factor we have is this 3% to 5% inflation each year in the construction industry. So these dollars that we show you today are based on 2020 amounts, and we have to be planning for the fact that these projects will cost a lot more when we get to 2028 than what they will today. So sometimes estimating costs that far out gets really challenging. So what I'm showing you here for 2021, this is what we're actively working on right now, is getting ready to do a lot of design work. Because of the expensive investment in the Downtown Core, we need to take a break in 2021 and complete some design work and save some money for capital projects. The principal difference between a capital improvement project and a maintenance improvement project has to do with the extent of reconstruction. Capital projects, capital improvement projects, are projects that would involve complete reconstruction of the right-of-way. And that would be following our Complete Streets policy. So when you start a capital improvement project, you're looking at our Pathways Master Plan, as well as drainage infrastructure, as well as utilities. So those projects are a lot harder to plan and design. They're also a lot more expensive because moving things out of the right-of-way, dealing with access conflicts, all different things that go into capital projects to really build that right-of-way for the future based on our planning documents is a lot more expensive and a lot more time-consuming. But the projects that you see for 2021, we're working on the design for Mission Street. That's an ongoing project. So we have some design funding put forth there. This is a 97... Sorry, 93% federal grant, so you're only seeing $22,000 of the Streets LOT committed to that project, but $278,000 from federal funding for an annual budget for Mission of $300,000. That's all designed. We will be starting on the Phase 3A portion of Downtown Core, which is from First from First to Lake Street and Park on... Sorry, First Street from East Lake to Park. As we design that, we then program in this column here, the actual construction. So we design the year before, construct Phase 3A, just like you've seen with Phase 1 and Phase 2. Phase 3A will be the subsurface infrastructure for First Street, and then we will design down here, we will design Phase 3B, which is the surface improvements that everyone sees. And you see in 2023, we will be constructing Phase 3B. So First Street is programmed to be under construction in 2022 and 2023. Going back to our 2021 table, we will also be starting the design for East Einhard Lane. This is from State Highway 55 east past the post office towards the middle school. And so once we design that in 2021, hopefully get a bid out in a favorable timeline, we will then do the construction. Looking for it, here we are. Construction in 2022. So that's the way this table kind of works. You'll see projects listed twice, but it will be the design phase and then the construction phase. As we move into 2022, you see that we have some reconstruction happening at the intersection of Einhard, and I'll talk a little bit more about that when we get to the maps and doing some construction at the intersection, as well as starting on our Phase 3B. And then moving into 2023. 2023, we start the design of some improvements on Mather Road. Mather is in really bad shape in certain areas, and we've looked at Mather because it also has some large water infrastructure improvements that need to happen. So that's a project where we would be working along with the Water Department, which you see under these funding sources, so that we can replace the water at the same time that we'd be doing the street. And this is an interesting project, which you're probably not too aware of, is the Downtown Core Phase 4 Stormwater Treatment, I should say Treatment, and Outfall. As part of the entire Downtown Core project, addressing stormwater and bringing the stormwater into compliance with the city and state's regulations is important. And we opted to do that as the last phase because we knew there would be a number of things that would change over time in the design. So we wanted to wait to make sure all of the pipes and all of the invert elevations would all drain to the correct spot. But this project principally will occur in Art Roberts Park. The majority of the stormwater from the city's rights-of-way and commercial and private businesses that don't currently have onsite treatment all drains to Art Roberts Park and is released into Payette Lake there. We've looked at the existing facilities in comparison to what the regulations are, and it's pretty... The existing facilities simply do not provide the necessary treatment to meet the state's water quality standards. So that's a project to upgrade the stormwater treatment facilities that are under the ground in Art Roberts Park to treat the runoff from our rights-of-way. And I've been talking with Kurt Wolf about this. That design will most certainly have to prioritize preserving our Christmas tree, but also look at how we can improve Art Roberts Park as a park facility at the same time. So I imagine between now and when we present that project to the council, there will be a parks component to it of new grading and possibly improving that park for ADA access or future opportunities to do celebrations and concerts and events there, that type of thing. So as we move past 2023, we're now into a period where we're still planning, but there will be some variability. So the level of confidence for years of implementation changes slightly because once you look at 2024, we may have a grant opportunity that comes along that we could get another project done sooner than later. Certain grants allow for shovel-ready projects. Certain grants require the state, which is a six-to-seven-year wait time. Mission Street's a perfect example of that. Mission Street, we've been wanting to reconstruct for quite some time, but because it's 97% or 93% funded by the state and the federal aid program, we will only be able to construct that when that federal program has the money. So Mission Street has been pushed later and later due to that funding cycle. If we were to choose to do it early, we would have to fund that 100% on our own. And that's a challenge because there are some serious maintenance issues on Mission Street today. So we'll have to keep band-aiding that road until the federal funding becomes available. However, I think that that's just what we do, and the cost savings to the city is worth the wait. So 2024, we start working on Mather, and we have identified a very more costly project of Woolley Avenue between Davis and Spring Mountain Boulevard. This is a project that you probably all have thought about and driven because our separated pathway that goes from downtown stops at Davis, and everyone would like it to connect to the new boardwalk that was constructed in the wetland east of there. That's a challenge because we have very limited right-of-way. There's a stream that runs along the side of the road and a lot of houses right up next to the right-of-way there. So that will be a challenging project, but we've looked at it for many years, and we're excited to solve it because the road conditions and the safety and the number of users using that small stretch of road is very high. So we've got it programmed for design in 2024 and then construction in 2025. This is a project we're actively searching grants for. So we had applied all three or four years ago for a state grant, and we were unsuccessful in getting that, and we ended up switching gears and applied for Mission Street instead. And then we ended up getting that one approved. So we'll still consider or we'll still continue to look for grants for that Woolley project because it's a favorable project for grant applications. There's multiple users. There's pathways. There's high-traffic counts. It's a major connection from our east side of town into the downtown. You also see we've identified, starting the design for Reedy Lane. We have Reedy Lane identified as a reconstruction project simply because the drainage on Reedy is not necessarily desirable. There's no culverts. A lot of the ditches are filled in. But it won't be as expensive of a reconstruction project as Woolley, where you're having to deal with streams and separated pathway construction. And that's not to say we won't do maintenance on many of these roads to keep them functional until the year that we can reconstruct them. Moving down the line, we've got a Boydston roundabout design, which I want to talk about a little bit later. And then we'd be constructing Reedy Lane in 2026, potentially working on the intersection of Boydston and State Highway 55. And then where the state is right now, they've told us that they're willing to commit to construction of Mission Street in 2026. Now, we've been working with LTAC and ITD on Mission Street for two years now, and they have stated to us, if we complete the design in 2021, it's very likely that they can accelerate the construction funding. So my hope is that Mission Street will get moved up either into 2025 or 2024 for construction, but we won't know that until we complete the design. Once we complete the design of Mission Street, then the state formally commits the money to construction. And so although they formally committed it to construction in '26, once we have the design done, if they can move some of their funding around, they will try to move that project up in the timeline. In 2027, we have a rather small project, and I didn't even show it under design because we pretty much have, or we will be able to have, the design completed at the same time, Thompson Avenue from Ann to Davis. So those are a number of the different projects that we're looking at funding with the Streets LOT funding being the principal funding source. Now, the one thing I haven't talked about yet, for every year in here, you see maintenance projects. The difference between a capital project and a maintenance improvement project is that a maintenance improvement project would be investment in simply the roadway and not necessarily all of the additional costs that come along with building pathways or dealing with drainage or utilities. And so those maintenance projects, we can accomplish a lot more lane miles with a lot less money. So I will transition over to the maintenance table, which has an extensive amount of work to be done. And our budget for 2021 on maintenance is $673,000. You'll see that maintenance line item in this capital table simply because we're trying to show over here in the Streets LOT budget how this pencils. Because if we have a huge deficit at the end of a funding year, we know that we can't fund projects. Where you see negative funds here, these are all within the range that Linda and I feel is acceptable. It's a 5% to 10% or less of what our total budget is. So so it's certainly something where cost savings along the line. We have some additional savings within the Streets LOT fund. We certainly would never complete a project unless we had the funding. But what you also see is as you move down into these years where we don't have anything programmed, very quickly, we start having a significant amount of money to spend in those future years. So what you see is at the end of this, if we did everything as we show and all the costs stay the same and we don't spend any more or less, we'd have $2.4 million sitting in the bank to start working in 2029. So we'll definitely have projects in here to spend, but this is how we track that. Going back to the maintenance plan, these are the tables. And you have them in your packet, and this is what we use to kind of identify. We put in contingencies and show what's going on. I don't want to go into great detail in the tables because it's just too much text, but this is a cost estimation exercise where we add up what we think the cost of these projects will be and then plug them back into the Capital Improvement Table to make sure that the total fund can support that amount. When we originally started in 2016 working on this, we were dedicating about $300,000 to $350,000 to maintenance projects. With the doubling of revenue that we've seen since then, we're now approximately budgeting around $700,000 for maintenance improvement projects. Now, for 2021, we're looking at $673,000, 2022, $498,000 or $500,000, but then we also have years where we spend more money. And this table is the most dynamic because these projects are conceptual, and you have to kind of take a number of projects and then try to package them into something that you think you can bid. And what we've found, what we've learned in the last five years is that if we don't create a project that's large enough, we will not be able to get bidders. So for instance, if we want to do a chip seal project, what we've learned is that chip seal project has to be close to $500,000 to get attention from the contractors. We tried to bid out a chip seal project a couple years back, and it was about $250,000 to $300,000 of work, and we didn't get any bidders. So what you see, the general nature of these years is trying to do rehab projects, which would be new asphalt, and then swap that with years where we're doing chip seals and fog seals, which are much less expensive. But we can package these into something where we bid that out, and one contractor or two contractors would do all this work in the city. And that's exactly what you have seen when you awarded your micro-surfacing contract last year, where we did a number of roads, a lot more lane miles than what we can do in our Capital Improvement Plan. So swapping basically back and forth, rehabbing projects, then doing chip seal projects. These chip seal projects are on our good roads. You see the average RSL, and this is not in your table. I had Horex help me update this since we put the packet together. And then moving back into 2023, doing rehab projects. And then 2024, another package of chip seal projects on our better roads, and then back to rehab. And the best way to present that information is in this table. Sorry, in this map. This map shows you where those maintenance dollars will be spent. Recently, what we just completed last year, you don't see. So a lot of the roads that we completed last year were in the Aspen Ridge subdivision. We're down here on Lick Creek Road. We had work happening on East Lake Street. So those aren't shown here, but these are projects from '21 to '28 that are anticipated. So I've done a lot of talking over the last 20 minutes. This is probably a good place to stop and answer any questions from the council on the difference between the Capital Improvement Plans and the Maintenance Improvement Plans, and any questions you might have on a specific road.
Thank you, Nathan. This is Bob. Counsel, let's let's try an informal technique. If you could, rather than me, call on you one at a time. Let's see how it works this morning. If you just speak up, if you have questions or comments that you'd like to share with Nathan.
Hi, Bob. It's Melanie. I don't really have a lot right now. I understand the difference between the tables, and it looks very organized. And I know this comment's been made before, but I'm consistently surprised that we don't put a little higher priority on Davis and Lick Creek considering the the amount of traffic that goes to Ponderosa, and the roadway really kind of always feels like it's not good. I mean, it seems bad.
Yep. Yeah, that's a great question, and I've been stewing on this quite a bit. Our Capital Improvement Plan does not identify Davis, but what our Maintenance Improvement Plan does identify is rehabilitating Davis in 2022 and then coming back in 2026 and doing a chip seal. So that would be repaving Davis in 2022. What that does not do is that does not necessarily address the facilities that may be desired on that road. And if the council desires to really invest more money into bike lanes or even pathways, we would have to significantly change. We'd move that project into this capital project list and try to figure out how we can fit that work in there. What I've thought about is trying to apply for a grant for Davis that would be similar to what you're seeing being done on Warren Wagon Road, where we could get some federal funding, access to federal lands, because Davis and Lick Creek do provide access to federal lands. But we have not explored that grant application process yet.
Okay, thank you. I just, you know, obviously, I live on Davis, and so I watch the traffic there a little more closely than the other areas. And with all the people walking up and down that area, it just seems really dangerous.
Yeah, it's a challenge, you know. I think as our town grows and the number of travelers to the Yeah, it's a challenge. I think as our town grows and the number of travelers to the state park increases, we definitely have that challenge. What I have been able to observe, and although I don't spend as much time down on McCall Avenue as I used to, it does appear that people are using McCall Avenue as the alternative route to go from the state park into town. And I think that's a credit to some of the signage we've done, as well as people just realizing it's not very fun to walk or bike on Davis Street.
Yeah.
Alternative, you're going to use it. But we do show, just to clarify right here, Melanie, this is our rehabilitation.
I did see that, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
Melanie, that's a great question. I would like to hear from the rest of the council how they feel about those priorities, Davis and Lick Creek.
Hey, this is Colby. I have a question that... Where are we with the ITD and the bypass and all of that?
Yeah, great question. So I was in a meeting just two weeks ago with Horox, who's working on that corridor study. It's very much still in draft form, and they're pulling that together. And I look forward to having that draft report presented to you before the end of the year in a similar work session environment with representatives of both ITD and the city. So that's coming together. It's no surprise that the way that analysis is shaping up is that the costs of improvements on the state highway are much higher than the needed improvements on Dine Hard for the state to take that over. What we've actually, and this is kind of a good transition, Colby, is to talk a little bit about the intersections. But we are working on that study. We will be presenting that to you before the year's out.
I mean, I guess, do you have a sense? Does it seem favorable that that might be able to happen, or is it just too early to tell?
Yeah, I think the goal of that study is simply to provide the financial impact of what it would take to improve those roads. The question of whether or not the city or the state would want to exchange right of ways is a secondary question. Because if it was simply, okay, the state will go in and fix the highway downtown to the city's standards, and the city will go fix Dine Hard to the state's standards, that would be simple, and then we could swap it. But I'm not convinced that the state has the funding to do that. And I'm not necessarily sure that that would be the procedure in which we would do that. It might be where the state provides funding to the city and then hands the city the right of way, and then the city would be obligated to do those improvements. And the city may or may not choose to take that on. There's a lot of liability with owning a state highway within your downtown, especially when it's close to your drinking water source. And so those are issues and aspects we'll have to discuss after the corridor study is done to make sure we're all understanding what risks and what benefits we get. But practically speaking, I think there are measures in which we can be encouraging the use of the bypass by more and more people. And that's where I wanted to transition over to the discussion of the two intersections. But I think it might be good to go through this question and answer on the maintenance and capital plans for our streets first, and then we can move to that. Does that help answer your question there, Colby?
Yeah, yeah, I appreciate that. I mean, I guess, in my opinion, that's kind of the elephant in the room with looking at the the longer-term planning. You know, when we look at how do we get sidewalks into town and et cetera, et cetera, you know, what we constantly hear, you know, why aren't we building sidewalks? You know, that seems to be kind of the key thing is to to swap those roadways in that. And then, I guess, to circle back to Melanie's question, I think that Davis is a pretty high priority one. I mean, it's getting super busy. I live on Woolley, so I see that the same thing is happening just through that corridor there. It's the traffic's increasing, not, you know... In the case of Woolley, there's the dead end of the pedestrian and bike lanes on either end of it. But, yeah, I think that on Davis, it would be nice if people can really start using McCall Ave. Or I appreciate that you called that out, that it seems that there's an increased usage on McCall Ave there. But I guess that's... There's a lot of people in Aspen condos and all those condos through there that are... You know, it's not, might not be intuitive to go north to get south for a lot of those people.
Right, right. Yeah, I would say my observation, and again, it's just one observation, that I think there... You know, if we actually did traffic counts, we'd see there's more bikes and pedestrians on McCall Ave than cars, which is a testament to the fact that that routing and that directional is working. But that doesn't take away from the need for people to walk and bike down Davis. There's a convenience store there. There's a large number of condos on the east side of Davis. So you have to interact with Davis if you're walking and biking to some extent. And that's going to be a challenge as we program pavement rehabilitation in 2022. There will be a strong desire and strong need to try to extend that project and expand that project to widen the shoulders and do what we can. The problem is, there's such limited space in the existing infrastructure, homes and grading and landscaping firms really have constrained that right of way. In addition to the overhead utilities there, as we try to widen that road, it gets really expensive really quick. So I think that's, I'm writing that down as an issue. We have to kind of noodle on a little bit and learn a little bit more and try to identify what opportunities are out there to do as much as we can to Davis. But just know, as we're showing right now, we're definitely showing some pavement rehabilitation in 2022, but certainly recognize the need for multimodal facilities on Davis.
Tom and Mike, this is Bob. I'd like to hear from the two of you on both Davis Street and Lick Creek Road, Melanie's question that she asked or statement.
Bob, this is Mike. I don't have any questions.
Okay, thanks, Mike. Tom, any thoughts on Davis and Lick Creek that we haven't already talked about?
It sounds like we're identifying some issues, and they're going to have to be addressed one at some time in the near future. I did have one question for Nathan concerning Mission. He kind of mentioned there were some higher dollar repairs that needed to be done. And I was wondering if he could elaborate on that a little bit.
Yeah, so Mission Street has been in disrepair for quite some time, and every spring, we see breakup of that road. Has a lot of factors that are going on there. The asphalt's at the end of its life. Secondly, that road gets a tremendous amount of construction traffic. And if anyone's been out there this year, we have two very large projects happening. The Smoke Jumpers Base is doing a complete reconstruction. They redid their, I guess it's their taxiway or their airplane parking lots. And then they're also building a secondary parking lot for their staff, and they're redoing their own parking lot. In addition to that, we have the taxiway project that the city's commencing on. So when you're out there, there is a very large construction truck, probably one or two every minute, running down that road. All of that abuse on that city's road is causing for some significant potholing and patching work that we have to do every year. So between now and when we actually kick off that reconstruction project, we will be spending not necessarily Streets LOT dollars, but Streets fund, you know, property tax-funded maintenance dollars to patch and repair that road throughout time. Every year, we have to go out and do work down there. In fact, we were out potholing that road just last week. Pothole patching, not creating potholes.
Right. Well, I think we're doing both, all the truck traffic from the airport and everything else. We're... Yeah, that's just a tough spot right there with a lot of traffic. And then River Ranch building their stuff, there is increasing the car traffic too. So I don't know if we've done a... I don't know if it's possible to do a study or something on the traffic flow when there's not construction. Because I know, I think when the heavy trucks hit it in the winter, they'll, you know, run in snow down there. You know, that first section right there is just atrocious at the moment.
Yep. So as I showed in that table, we're in the design process. And I met with Forestry engineers, who is our design engineer on that road. And there's a website that we've created that is live now. Or if it's not live, it will be live in the next week. I need to talk with Aaron and Jody Weaver. But the stakeholder component of that design, meeting with the property owners along that road will be happening in the next month. So as the design ramps up, we'll be talking more about that. And again, my goal is to get that design completed and approved by all the different agencies all the way, you know, from here to Washington DC, so that then we can really put the pressure on ITD to try to move that construction schedule up from 2026, hopefully, you know, to 2024, 2025.
All right, awesome. Thank you.
This is Colby. I have one more quick question for clarification. When is the current Streets lot up for voting again? I guess, when does it run out?
Yeah, Bessie Jo, can you answer that question?
Sure. It ends in December of 2025. So we would want to have an ordinance ready. The recommendation would be for the May ballot of 2025. Therefore, if it, for some reason, did not pass, you have a year to go back to the voters, which would be 2026 in May. So we always target for the May date.
Great, thanks.
Mayor Bob, do you have any questions?
No, I don't. I've been just really listening and learning, and it's... I have an overall impression, and it's a very favorable one. Right in the first 10 minutes of your presentation, I was so happy to hear that, big picture, that we are on track. If you look at big picture, yes, things change year to year. We have to optimize. We have to use grants and be smart, and pavement fails earlier than we think. But the statement that really made me feel great was, I think you said by 2026 or '22, one of those years, that all the projects that we thought, that we envisioned would get done are getting done. That's really good performance, considering all the competition that we're seeing for resources and the bidding. You know, some of the projects you bring to us, they're way more than we envisioned because of the competition for... You know, other people are doing projects, and we're seeing some inflation there. So I think kudos to the city staff and you, Nathan, for managing that process and for the LOT administrators. This process is working great. I'm really impressed.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate those words. This is what we want to be able to show. Let's see, it says I'm sharing. Am I sharing? I'm not sharing. Let me try something here. I go back. Work my technology skills here. I want to share my desktop. This is what we want to be able to show the voters, right? 100% completed by 2022. You said this is what we were going to do, and we did it. So that's been my goal as the manager of these projects, and that's our expectation. Now, we're not done. We still have to complete Park Street, and we still have to complete Dine Hard Lane. So we'll have that challenge between now and 2022. And then we'll be in a position to present, you know, proposed CIPs for the future. What really has been a challenge for me is this expectation that you meet these deadlines. And when I was involved as the city engineer at the time, when I put this together, I never imagined that it was, you know, something that was, you have to do this on this date. And so we'll have to work with our legal team, staff, as well as the council to make sure that the ordinance that we prepare to replace the current ordinance provides that perspective and that reality, that these are planning documents. And similar to what we're talking about on Davis, if we see an opportunity where the city can save money and execute a project at a specific year that's more cost-effective or just makes sense, we want to be able to have that flexibility, knowing that there could be some consequences where other projects get pushed. And I think that's been a learning opportunity for us to say, we need to be clear with the voters that we're going to try to do this, but there are large factors. You know, as we've learned, 2020's brought viral pandemics and other things that might just prevent us from being able to accomplish things. So, okay, well, we're 45 minutes into this work session. I wanted to take a little bit of time. I'm going to shut my door to talk about these intersections. Annette and I had a meeting with the District 3 engineer, Caleb Lakey. I believe, Annette, it was Monday, if we can remember what we did on Monday.
Yes, it was Monday.
It was, okay, great. The intersections of Dine Hard and 55 and the intersection of Boydston and 55, which on this map is right here and then down here, have been identified not only in our Transportation Master Plan that was adopted in late 2017, but also as being heavily evaluated in that corridor study. But even more, has been heavily evaluated by Midas Gold because they have expressed a commitment to not run their mining trucks through the downtown of McCall. And in order to do that, there are some improvements principally that are needed at the intersection of Dine Hard and 55. It's not to say trucks don't use that corner, but there are some geometric constraints there that are making that difficult, especially from kind of standard highway design standards. So I've been working with this kind of three-party team, Midas as well as the city and then ITD, to say, you know, what do we want to see there for the long term? And this is the first time, because I'm showing it in our capital improvement plan, that I feel like we can talk a little bit about this because it's actually starting to gain legs, that fixing those intersections could be accomplished in a partnership with a developer as well as ITD and the city. So we've started to put some money into that. As far as showing some commitments, there will be a lot more discussion with the council as we move through discussing both the EIS and our comments back to the Forest Service, but also some cooperative agreements that we're trying to figure out of how we could actually work together, all three of us, to fix those intersections so that it would be much more convenient for large trucks to use Dine Hard, as well as much more convenient for vehicles traveling south on Dine Hard, trying to get south, to not have to stop at a stoplight and could have a free-turning, southbound, right lane, so that they could get onto 55 a lot quicker. At the Boydston and 55 intersection, things are a little bit more complicated there in that... Uh, in that to make some marginal improvements there to improve truck traffic is very costly. Uh, and our master plan has contemplated either a, a signal or a roundabout. And so, um, we've been talking what, what it would cost, the difference of what it would cost to do a signalized intersection versus a roundabout, uh, and we're starting to get some, um, cost estimations there and program in what it would take to do that. And as Annette and I work through these discussions with both ITD and, and Midas, we'll likely be coming to you in, in separate work sessions or discussions on, on more details on that. But, uh, it's exciting discussion. Um, we know that, um, the community does not want trucks driving downtown. Uh, and so we're trying to figure out how we can leverage all the investment in the area to maybe accelerate some of those construction projects, which really aren't programmed in our CIP. Other than what we've just started working on with this three-party group.
Hey Nathan, it's Colby again. Um, I guess I, my, my question would be, how would those two intersection improvements or changes impact the, um, potential for swapping those roadways?
Great question. Um, so where the conversations have gone to date is that the city, um, and ITD are somewhat unified in our desire for how we'd like to see those intersections reconstructed. And so, um, if those intersections were reconstructed in a manner that meets the city and ITD standards, that would be one less thing in the way of, of doing a formal transfer of right of ways. One of the real, um, roadblocks to, you know, directing all truck traffic onto Dine Hard and Boydston is in addition to those roads in the winter time. Our street department, um, and we have oh, 10, 10 operators, um, that are working, you know, all of a full shift just to manage the snow in, in our city streets. And, you know, we're, that's a challenge to be able to do that. We, we often run 12 to 13 hour shifts where there's overtime. The, um, ITD has multiple shifts, 24 hours a day, seven days a week. They have a tremendous fleet of vehicles and salting machines and different things. So what may be an interim step before we do a formal transfer would be to have maintenance of Dine Hard and Boydston accomplished by ITD during the winter months. And maintenance of state highway 55 through downtown, uh, completed by the city, uh, during the winter months. And we already do that. When, when the state comes through town to plow, they plow up until First Street, actually right before Albertson's. And then they lift their plow blade and they, they may apply a little bit of, um, salt or liquid salt. Uh, but they don't, they, they lift their plow blade up and then they put their plow blade back down when you get past Colorado. And the city is responsible then for moving all the snow in and around parked cars and all the hassles that we have with that. So we're already doing that to some extent, but to formally sign that route as a truck route. There's some intersection improvements and then also a commitment that, um, you know, the city wouldn't be obligated to maintain that road during the winter time because that hill going down to the river is just, uh, too much for the city's fleet to be able to ensure it would be safe.
Nathan, this is Melanie. So as I'm thinking about this and, and, you know, the, the whole thought that, that we may have to do some sort of, um, correction, whether it be a light or a roundabout at, um, 55 and Boydston. The first thing that occurs to me is that if we were to make that kind of improvement and, and granted getting truck traffic out of town would be wonderful. But we cannot control railroad and 55. And I feel like we're going to set ourselves up for so much pushback in that, in that situation. If we make an improvement at 55 and Boydston, yet we're not fixing the problem or even attempting to fix the problem downtown, really. We talked about, at one point, we talked about making, um, railroad to 55 a right turn only. And I, I realized that the downtown course kind of prohibited that right now. Are we still thinking that way?
We are. I think we have an opportunity to discuss that over the winter. Um, you've seen us install those delineate delineators, the white delineators. My thought-
Which I think are great.
Yeah. My thought was that we would possibly next summer install delineators in the turn, the left turn lane on railroad to do a test. So we'd put those delineators in, say, second week of June and have them in place through fourth of July, all the way probably till right about now where we're, and, and this will be interesting to see too. Um, we typically see traffic volumes drop right about the third to fourth week of August as school sets back in. Now this year's a little different with remote learning and a lot of people probably teaching their kids from McCall, even though they may not be, um, students of McCall Donnelly. But that was my thought was that we would try that out. Certainly the corridor study is going to, um, address those concerns about those intersections. And so it will, it, it won't be ignored as we talk about this corridor study. The problem is, is that, um, traffic signals, you know, putting in a turn signal there, an actual lighted signal, a stoplight, uh, has some trickle down effects. And, uh, as soon as we implement a signal at railroad to alleviate congestion of people turning onto the highway, we will likely be backing up traffic all the way to Dine Hard during the summer. So we have to think about that and really try to work on how we can encourage people to use alternative routes. So that, that we can avoid that, even though a turn signal would, or a, a lighted signal, uh, would be the, the simple solution. It just has a lot of, um, consequences. So.
Thank you.
Melanie, you think like, when you look at it what contributes to a lot of the traffic through there is, is just highway traffic. You know, if we can figure out how to, you know, one, reduce the highway traffic through town, it'll help, help that congestion down there. And I don't know how a right turn only out of railroad would be, it would, it'd be, it, it would just be hard to, how are you going to go south? Like how there's-
I, well, you, you're going to have to provide an alternate route, but, uh, you know, a lot of the congestion, I agree with you, Colby, is from highway traffic. Uh, but we get all those people that are trying to make a left turn and head south on 55 on railroad. So they back up on railroad. Nobody can take a right. So that contributes to the backup. And then people start getting really, um, I don't know, mean, aggressive. And, um, it just, it, it, again, it feels really dangerous right there in the summer and during, you know, high traffic times. And I don't think that's the only street that you feel that. I think you can feel it coming off of a couple of others like Thompson as well. I, I just think we need to come up with a solution that, you know, in the interim, when we don't, you know, we're not making corrections like, you know, lighted, uh, turn from Boydston onto the highway. I mean, we, we need to take a look at that in correlation to the whole picture because I feel like if we're not looking at that at the same time, um, people are not going to be behind what we're doing, um, which is fine, but, uh, we're going to get a lot of pushback because they see that as a problem.
I, I couldn't agree with you more. I think the idea of the closing the right-hand turn lane would simply be to force traffic on railroad to turn north and then figure out a way to get south, whether they use Mission Street, whether they use First Street in Colorado, but breaking that traffic up and trying to eliminate the opportunity for someone to feel like they got stuck on railroad. Uh, but that certainly does not address the, um, the situation where you've got, uh, uh, traffic coming through town that's causing that problem. Uh, and I think again, it's always good to test these things out. And I think that the delineators, the temporary, they're not temporary, but they're removable. Um, we could put those up. Um, part of patching that road this spring was in the spirit of that. We didn't want to spend all the time and effort to drill into that asphalt unless we had a good surface. And so we needed to fix the asphalt there so that we could be ready to do this, um, this test in summer of 2021. And then see what kind of pushback we get where people are not happy that they can't turn south, um, at the corner of railroad and 55. And, you know, the goal again would be to have that closure be very limited to the period of time in which we have that traffic congestion. I think we, we all know we get a lot of congestion between mid to late June and mid to late August. And then for the rest of the year, it's rather sporadic, maybe on the weekends, maybe, maybe just a Saturday morning, maybe just midday on a beautiful fall Saturday. Uh, but at what cost do we want to impose for the rest of the year on something that's rather, um, rather limited? I wanted to show you a drawing, um, of, and the computer's having a hard time generating this of what the concept for the Dine Hard right turn lane is. And here we go. Okay. Can, is everybody seeing this as I zoom in here? Mayor Bob, can you see that?
Yes, we can see it.
Yeah.
Okay. So this is, yeah, this is the idea. Disregard everything outside of the green, um, the green line. This is the idea that, uh, district three engineer and my team have been looking at with the idea that, uh, not only would we have, um, stop bars moved back and some widening here so that a, a large truck can easily make this turn without driving over a car that's parked waited to go to school. But also incorporating this free turning right-hand lane. The opportunities here reduce the amount of congestion of, of traffic that hopefully will be increasing as they use Dine Hard to, to go from north to south through McCall, but then also improving large trucks' ability to go this way. And then also just improving multimodal and pedestrian, uh, interactions here. So this is the concept we've been working on with this intersection. The challenge is that, is that, um, acquiring this space to build this will require cooperation with the FAA. So Rick Stein and myself and TO engineers are working on how we can get this area designated for public right of way, public ingress and egress access, um, identified within the airport property. Um, and that's a challenge in itself. So we're doing title research with the mayor title right now. There's surveying going on to understand the physical constraints, but we look forward to determining this and getting the FAA's approval. So that would then green light, uh, the opportunity to do construction at Dine Hard and 55. Any questions about that? I guess I'll also say, you know, there are a lot of, uh, factors in, to making this happen. And the timeline, um, you know, it, it's very likely that this will not be completed by 2022. But if the stars align and everybody moves forward, including the development investment that's, that's driving this, you know, 2022 would be the earliest we'd see this get done. The good thing is the city's planning to fix, to repave and reconstruct Dine Hard in 2022 as well. So our discussion earlier this week was let's program both of these improvements for the same time so that the, um, you know, the impact of construction in this area may only have to occur in one year and not two. But that's an ideal scenario, not, not necessarily reality. And we'll just have to kind of go through that, um, process, uh, as we move along. But again, uh, to, to be consistent with our original streets LOT ordinance and what we identify as, you know, a, a certain need. If anybody's driven on Dine Hard East, it's, uh, very problematic, especially during the spring breakup. You know, we're, we're planning right now to redo Dine Hard east of 55, um, in 2022. And independent of anything we do over here on the southeast side, I'll also be working with ITD to try to get them to commit some funding to help us improve this corner because we all know large trucks cannot turn east without driving over the sidewalk, um, at that intersection. Okay. I think that concludes pretty much what I wanted to share with you. Annette, I don't know if you have other things that you'd like to talk about. Again, just kind of parting words, our maintenance projects about $750,000 a year are really trying to hit the entire community, uh, focusing principally on our high volume roads. Uh, trying to focus after we look at high volume roads, then also, um, trying to take care of our good roads. Cause if we can take care of our good roads, the cost is much cheaper than if we let them go into disrepair and then have to kick them into the capital projects. Uh, so that's our goal here on the maintenance plan. The capital plan, um, is, you know, shows a lot less lane miles getting worked on because these are very expensive reconstruction projects. And, uh, both of these plans are subject to change. Chris Malvich and our consulting teams do a pavement inventory every three years. We also do traffic counts every three years and we use that data to make, make these, uh, priorities and change those priorities over time. So I guess Annette, back to you.
Thanks Nathan. Um, that was going to be my only last question was for you to highlight the pavement condition index work that you do that helps us, um, understand, uh, where we have pavement failures and, um, how fast they're deteriorating versus, um, just the anecdotal information and, um, observations and complaints that we get. I do want to say, um, that I really appreciate the effort of the streets crew to try to keep up on this task. Because it's never ending and we'll never seem like we're ever done. As soon as something's fixed, we got to fix something else. And I know you've had, uh, have been shorthanded as well. So I think that the fact that the crew that you do have on board right now is trying to keep up with everything and, um, is really admirable. And I appreciate all of the work that they do non-stop to try to keep everything functional and flowing for, uh, the amount of traffic we have. It is interesting to me, uh, based on where I was before. You know, we had a steady population and steady, um, traffic model and forecasts and things that made it a lot more predictable and easy to figure out what we needed to do where and when. And it's a lot less predictable here because, um, our visitor population skews those things. And then of course, weather conditions, um, also drive a lot of what we have to do. So if we have a really bad winter, some of this stuff could accelerate. Um, and so again, I'm just very impressed with the work that your staff is able to get completed and how well we can try to keep things together. And, um, we definitely have some issues we have to tackle. I agree the traffic flow through downtown and trying to think through like how to, um, change driving behaviors, um, and get people to think or understand some other routes they could use to try to lessen intersection impacts is really a tough nut. We have, you know, this thing called Google Maps that a lot of people use that tells them to go certain ways through our city that aren't our preferred ways. And so I'm in the back of my mind always wondering like, how do we get a preferred, um, route for people that aren't familiar with the area? And they're just following what Google Maps tells them. And I don't know how we influence Google Maps. But stuff like that, um, and living on the east side of town, you know, all the traffic in and out of Panda Rose- And living on the east side of town, you know, all the traffic in and out of Ponderosa, and then again, the boat ramp areas seems to be our primary dilemma. And yeah, so we have a big, it's going to be a tough one, I think, to solve, but I know we're all committed to trying to think through like the best solutions and also be open to perhaps one of our attempts doesn't work and we got to regroup. So yeah, I guess, I'm not sure if that's helpful or not, but that's, that's
Yeah.
sort of my closing comments is I think we do a great job with what we have and we definitely understand we have issues. We got to figure out, it's just, I'm not 100% sure what the ultimate solution is.
Well, I have a couple of things to share. You asked, you know, rerouting, how do we, you know, try to encourage alternative use of, of, of routes instead of going to the intersection of railroad and 55 if you're coming from the east? Throughout the spring and summer, and now we're into late summer, I've been working both with the State Park and as well as ITD. And the city has purchased, as well as the State Park has purchased new signage for Ponderosa State Park. And we just put forth a, a purchase order to finance to repave the intersection of Spring Mountain Boulevard and Lit Creek Road, which is not shown in this map, but I do have my, I pulled up a different mapping program. But the point of this is that, what do we do? How do we get most of the visitors to the State Park that's coming from the south not to go through downtown? So working with the State Park, with Chris Malvich, as well as ITD, new signage will be installed this fall that identifies access to State Highway 55 should be using Lit Creek Road down to Spring Mountain Boulevard and all the way down to Dine Hard, where we have a lighted intersection. And when you come into McCall on State Highway 55, there will be a sign that says, Ponderosa State Park, turn right on Dine Hard. And there will be a sign at Dine Hard Lane and Sampson Trail that says, Ponderosa State Park, go north. And the hope here is that that signage will help, even if Google Maps or whatever tells you to go into town, will, will show you that you should actually take Dine Hard, Spring Mountain Boulevard and Lit Creek Road to get to the State Park instead of going down and using railroad. Similarly, we have additional signage that we'll be putting on Davis Street at the intersection of Woolley that says, if you want to go south on State Highway 55, go east and then go south. Do not come into this intersection where we have problems and try to turn south. Again, that's a test, it's an experiment. I think both ITD, the State Park and the Public Works Department think this is a good option. And so look for that signage to be installed this fall. We were hoping to get it installed this spring, but with all of the challenges with COVID and just the delay of getting the signs from ITD, we've had to push that off, but that will be happening. The other thing I wanted to express, and this is really, you know, kind of the, the another elephant in the room, is that the Streets LOT is funding a tremendous amount of investment of the city's streets asset. The $2 million, the 1.75, the two, whatever it's going to be as we move forward, is a significant amount of money in comparison to the Streets budget that you approve each year. There's about $100,000 in patching and stormwater management and house bill money that we get into that Streets budget for us to do these patching projects, these non-Streets LOT funded investments. Now, that doesn't, that doesn't mean you don't have a lot of money in the Streets fund for staff and for materials and dust abatement and repairs and snow management equipment, all those other things. But when you, you know, when Chris Malvich and I sit down and look at how do we fund improvements, we have a very small pot of money to take from the Streets fund, but we have a very large pot of money from the Streets LOT. And that really just points to the importance of the Streets LOT fund and helping the city maintain their Streets asset.
And Nathan, that's, this is Bob. I, that's why I think, I think the council feels really good about, we, we all feel really good about the implementation and the good work that's been done and the story that you are able to tell. And we just need to continue to work with Aaron and other partners to get that message out a couple of years before the vote, you know, to reauthorize. But we do have a good story to tell, and I think our voters will be gaining lots of confidence as they hear, as they hear you explain our story. You know, obviously it has to be condensed into real simple terms, but yeah, like this 100% completed by 2022, that's going to give voters a lot more confidence that we are spending that LOT money wisely and leveraging off of grants and being creative and getting the job done. I think it's a great story to tell.
Yep. I hope so, too. And with these maintenance projects that we hopefully will get done in the next few years, we can show maps that look more like this versus maps that show this. Because, you know, if you were to look at the cost to fix this small portion of our community downtown, it doesn't look as impressive as a map like this that shows a lot more efforts being spent in different areas. So that's a, that's one of the aspects we really need to improve upon, our, our information and how we get that information out to the public. And I look forward to working with Aaron and the rest of the staff to try to emphasize this maintenance work that's going on that is also being funded by the, the Streets LOT.
So before we wind down and adjourn, I would like to do one last sweep, and I'll call on each council member. Melanie, I'm going to start with you. And just any closing remarks you'd like to share with Nathan and Annette?
I just really appreciate all the work that you're doing and, you know, the, the thought that goes in it, into all of your plans. And I appreciate your patience with us when we, you know, are asking questions that, you know, we don't necessarily have a lot of background, but we have, you know, we have you to rely on, and I appreciate all of you and your staff. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Melanie. I'll next go to Tom.
Yeah, Nathan, great work. And I mean, we can, we're seeing all the, all the stuff you guys are doing. And I think it's just time to put out a, get something out to the public so they see the, the fruits of your labors.
Okay.
Thank you, Tom. Mike, you're up next. Mike, can you hear me? Mike Machazek, um, do you have any closing thoughts you'd like to share with Nathan and Annette?
Oh, sorry. No, I don't, other than that this is, you know, it's always valuable for everybody to be informed on what's going on, and Nathan does a great job presenting and speaking in a way that everybody can understand, I think. So yeah, no, that's all the comments I have.
Thank you, Mike. Colby?
Yeah, thanks, Nathan. I think you've done a great job in, in planning this stuff out. And I think it's, it's really important that, that you have that, the 100% complete by 2022, I think is really impressive and important to the, you know, supporting this local option tax for streets, which I, you know, I think that we're, we're at a, a good spot right now and with a couple of big things coming up, you know, we'll kind of set the stage for 2025, when we need to get that local option tax passed again. And I think showing that, that we have that track record of being able to, you know, accomplish what we said we're going to accomplish is, is extremely important. So nice work on that. I think that's huge. And I guess, you know, looking forward, you know, my, kind of what I see is that, you know, being able to get that highway traffic out of downtown is crucial. And if we can swap ownership of the roadways, I think that also opens up some pretty big opportunities for us in some of those troubling intersections there to maybe have approaches that, that don't have to comply with all the, the state and federal standards, I think that opens up some big opportunities. And, you know, finally, the, the other piece to that, our congestion problem is just getting people into town or through town, not in cars and trucks, but on foot, bike, bus, you know. So I think that it's really important that we keep looking on how, how to get that pedestrian and multimodal traffic in and through town. And really, I think until we don't have a highway running through the town, we're going to kind of be restricted on what we can do once you get into that corridor. So nice work on keeping everything moving forward and, and I think you're doing great.
Thanks. Yeah, keep abreast to the upcoming work sessions that we'll be scheduling with you on the intersection discussion as well as the corridor study, because I think getting that corridor study done will then be a jumping off point for actual physical improvements to both, mostly the, the highway, I think we'll be able to understand that a little bit better. You know, the plan that I've shown you today really just doesn't discuss it because it's not necessarily our asset and we have a lot of things we need to do with ours. So I try to separate those two discussions, but most certainly we're, we're concerned about it. We know the desire to improve things south of Colorado as well as, as east of, or west of First Street. So it's, it's definitely on our minds.
Thanks, Colby. Thanks, Nathan. So to wrap this up, I think you've heard a lot of sincere appreciation and comments from council. We have a lot of confidence in our city staff and Annette and your leadership. It's, it's really nice to attend a meeting, a work session like this and get good news. And I think we all recognize there's been a lot of challenges, a lot of hard work and effort that went into getting us up to speed and being on track. So thank you very much.
Yeah. Well, we have a vacancy for the city engineer as well as a Streets operator right now. So we're a little short-staffed over here. If you guys can put out the good word, we'd appreciate that.
We will do that. Annette, if you don't have any further comments, I would suggest that we adjourn.
I do not, Mayor Bob. Thanks for your time this morning to do a little deeper dive into our Streets project. We really appreciate it.
Well, it was a great meeting. Meeting adjourned, and thank you, council, for drinking your coffee early this morning and being ready to go. It was a great meeting. We will see you soon.
Thanks, all.
Hey, thank you, Mayor.